Good evening and welcome to Wasika Public School's school board regular meeting. Tonight is Thursday, October 26, 2023. It is 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room, and this meeting is called to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
All right, and can we begin with a motion to approve tonight's agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Continuing with recognition of visitors. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone in the audience need to speak? All right, and anyone listening at home, please feel free to send an email if you're not able to come in person to wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and we will read it at our future meeting. Continuing with payment of claims. Director Dunn, you had the privilege this month?
Sure. I looked through the claims for the bills for this past month, and I would like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable of $1,722,223.70, September dental of $15,362.75, and payroll of $857,127.85.
I'll second that. Thank you. A first and a second. Any discussion?
Is it usually account payable so high?
There was a big, there was a couple bigger payments on there.
Yeah, some annual payments that happened this year, for this year.
It's like $1 million or two. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Continuing with information items, beginning with our report for the ALC by Ms. Donner, if you want to introduce.
Absolutely. Well, as we finish here, the second full month of this school year, if you can believe it how fast this fall is going, we have the opportunity to have the first of our building reports that we like to hear at each of our regular meetings, hear from our building leaders, to share what's happening in their individual site throughout the district. So here tonight is Mandy Nohner, who's our coordinator of our area learning center, with the chance to share with you some of the things that's happening up at the ALC.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to draw attention to the resurrected image. This I found, it's, I believe, from the 90s. It was the original symbol that the ALC used. I actually had our art teacher kind of re-image it and put some color in it, and so that's kind of the new, the new image that we're, that we're using. And I changed the north, south, east, and west on it to WALC, and yeah, brought that back to life. So I thought that was pretty cool. It's what they used back in the 90s for the ALC. So currently, we have 71 enrolled at the ALC, seven through 12. Right now, we have four in our junior high program, 67 in our high school, 12 for special education. That is increasing as we speak. We're getting more interest for our special education program. 30 in our night school, that is three sessions long. We typically start out slow in our night school, that credit recovery session. We ended last year with about 70, running through the whole session, the whole year. So we also do one credit recovery in the summertime as well, and these are true credit recovery, meaning if they, they didn't quite pass with at least a 40%, they are able to recover just the percent that they need to, to get a passing grade, which is the true credit recovery. When we go off a hex semester schedule, so we cut the trimesters from the high school in half, which allows them to start over six times during the year, which makes the earning the diploma a little bit more attainable in the timeframe that they, they spend with us. We also have an independent study program and apprenticeship programs, which we've had in the past. We have a few new staff members this year. We have a new math teacher, Marley Rohr, Emily Kermines for science. We also have a full-time counselor this year, John Pareda, and some of the old staff is the same as well. About 10 to 20 per class, depending on the needs of the students, and depending on what classes they need. So a ratio of about 12 to 1. Our vision and mission is same as it always has been, having high expectations for our students, making sure that they have a successful future, wherever that may be, if it's post-secondary, if it's right into the workforce, you know, being a productive citizen. So last year, when I did this presentation, we talked about the students and their passing rate from the prior year, and it was an increase. This year, I am very proud to say that we just ended our first hex. 49% of our students passed all seven of their classes, which is another huge increase. It's actually the highest that we've ever had in the time that I've been at the ALC, which is 18 years now. And we attribute that to the new programs that we've rolled out this year, which I'll talk about here in a few seconds. So our focus areas have been relationship building, our positive behavior interventions, and the independent study programs that we have. So we've been working, actually, it started last year with the regional centers for excellence in partnership with MDE. We've been working on restorative practices. So rather than punitive approaches to discipline and student issues, just any student issues, it's more proactive. So we try to work with the students on positive reinforcements and working out any issues that we might have to prevent them from happening next time, and really working on that student rapport. We find that students will go a long way and really do what's expected of them if you have a positive relationship with them. So we've been working on restorative practices, including circles to build community and doing restorative chats, so finding out what went wrong, where was the breakdown in communication, and then restoring whatever, restoring what went wrong. So the PBIS, the student group programming that we started this year, bring that up here. So we have, in our seat-based programming, where the students come to school all day, every day, we have the gamma Js, the beta Js and the alpha Js, and it's based off of, well, one, age, but also its incentives for coming to school every day and doing what's asked of you. So if you pass seven out of seven classes, if you have less than five absences, you get these incentives. You can have an open lunch, the symposiums that we do on Fridays, you know, you get to be a teacher's assistant, excuse me, you get to be part of the student advisory committee. You get first dibs on any field trips, you know, the more fun field trips that maybe have a cost to it, your, your fee is waived. So it's more incentives. And actually, we had our honors breakfast today, and that's for students that have passed seven out of seven classes. And there were some students who found out today that they didn't get, they didn't make the alpha Js, and they were very upset about it. And they thought, man, I just had to come to one symposium and I would get to be an alpha J. So they're really working hard this next time. Or I only had to do this one thing. You mean, if I showed up to school that day on time, I could have been an alpha J this next time? So they're, they're, they're really working hard to get to be an alpha J the next time. Or if they're, you know, in the younger group, oh, I get to be a beta J next time because my birthday, I get to turn 16. So, and all parents have signed off on this and are well aware. So these are just some of the, the things that they get to do based on their, the PBIS. And so some highlights, we talked about some of the full-time school counselor. We have life skills groups going with our social worker and our counselor. So we have group being done each week. Some of the other things like the Construct Tomorrow and the Work Experience and Career Seminar. We're continuing with the family Thanksgiving. They make the Thanksgiving meal all morning, and then we sit down in the hallway and eat together. The honors breakfast we talked about, and that's when breakfast is cooked for them. They get to sit down with their name on the card, like you guys have here. And our Friday symposiums. Last year, we started painting a mural. This year, we get to, or yep, I think they finished the, the mural. We're going to do a mural here. They learned Taekwondo last year. We've gone out to the lake and learned how to canoe, and we've been fishing and things like that. So they enjoy those. Thank you.
Questions for Mandy?
You mentioned you had about 30 students in, in your night class programs. Is that included in your, your 71 students enrolled, or is it 71 the students that you have during the day?
The 71 are, are daytime program. The credit recovery students are from Wasika and the surrounding districts. So it's in addition to.
Yep. I just wanted to clarify, yeah.
Sure.
Thanks.
Do you have any numbers about enrollment for last, for example, 10 years? Are we static or it's going up or down or?
For the last 10 years?
Five, 10, I don't know. I'm just general, general.
So over the last, I would say, decade, the numbers have been steadily increasing. Depending on the amount of staff we have, depends on the number of students that we can take. So the more staff we have, the more students we can take. But generally, the staff has stayed stable for the last, I would say, five years or so. And so with the even number of staff, the number of students have stayed pretty much the same.
I would say since I've been here, we've been between 65 and 80. Yep.
And what's the maximum on the students you can take with our current staff?
About 80, would you say, Mandy?
Yes. If we want to stay near the, the recommended number for an ALC classroom. Of course, that depends on the chemistry of the student and class type.
What do you do if you, if the demand is higher than, you know, what you can offer? Where those kids go, or what are the other options?
So we have had a waiting list before. I don't like to have a waiting list because I'd like to serve the kids that are in need of the type of program that we have. So we do, that's why I started the independent study backup for those students that really have less than 10 credits, or have not very many core courses, but have a lot of electives that could be earned through working. So we shift the students to independent study that really can benefit, and that'll open up more spots for students to come into our seat-based program. So I've been really trying to keep a waiting list, to prevent a waiting list from happening. And so we try to keep, keep open spots for those students that really need to utilize our program.
Thank you.
Yep.
And you mentioned work experience a few times in the slides. So are students finding their own work experience, or is that something that your program is helping them find, or is it a combination or?
A combination of, of both. We try to set up partnerships with, with workplaces around here, but those students that already have jobs, we want to make sure that they are getting credit for the work that they're already doing.
Okay, yeah, cool.
And Eric is a licensed work-based learning teacher, right?
He is.
So a licensed work-based learning teacher.
Yes.
At the ALC. So that's how that's able to happen.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mandy, thank you for being here tonight and sharing about your program.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, well, continuing then with the superintendent report from.
Right, well, this evening, thank you for the time this evening, and thank you, Mandy, again for hearing, telling us what's going on at the ALC. So tonight, I wanted to take you through the preliminary results of our facility survey that has been out there for the last six or eight weeks or so to get some feedback from our community. This, we got a little over 400 responses to our survey. So there's going to be the time for the board members to really dig in and to read all the comments. And so intentionally, this is a very brief overview of where we are, knowing that decisions come after you have the opportunity to really dig into the results and talk more about that. So my intent this evening is to just kind of share with you at a high level, here's where we are, here's what we received. And then in your board folder tomorrow, I will place the full results with all the comments and everything else for you to look through as board members. So the, to the main question, would a $36 million bond be supported? And the numbers, you're going to notice in the upper hand, upper left-hand corner are a little bit different, 425 for this one, 428 for the next one. It's because not everybody, they weren't required questions. So if you didn't respond to every question, it could be a little different there. So we see 51% of the respondents were in the strongly supporter support range, split right down, right down the middle, pretty much, in terms of supporting or not supporting all of this plan. For the next one, Caitlin. The next, excuse me, the next question was why? Why do you think that? And one of the things that was unique about this question was folks could check all applied. So if they had more than one reason, they could certainly respond as such. So the numbers don't add up to 100, but it's because of the 428 respondents, for example, 68 of them clicked that the cost was reasonable, but they also might have clicked something else as well. So that's how that works out. The labels had to compress a little bit because there was an other tab on this one, which people took advantage of. And so there was several, several of the responses, I think I want to say 70-ish or so, that made this a very long one, that you'll have a chance to read when I send this to, to you as well. But you can see the responses there are a variety of different opinions and perspectives, and all of which are very valid. The second line, the 31%, 31.3, was the cost is too high. So you can see that was, that was a perspective that was represented in the, in the, in the survey. We got a chance to hear about congestion and traffic concerns from 157 respondents. And then the second to last one there that says 113, that was, I would not support any bond at this time. So that was just over a quarter of our respondents, just no matter what we, we would propose right now doesn't fit their needs as a family or, or community member for that. So we can look, once we get into the spreadsheet, which is what the, you started really manipulating the spreadsheet around, you can sort by which of these respondents were attached to the support and not support. So you can really dig into some of that analysis here over the next, next few weeks. Go to the next one there, Caitlin. We did get a nice cross-section of our community to respond for the most part. 53%, just over 53% have students in school or at this time. So, which, by, by looking about the inverse of that, quite a few of our responses came from folks that do not have students in school, which is important because we need to get our entire community's perspective on this. And while the number might not be as high as we hoped, I feel like it's a, it is a positive in the sense that we've got a pretty good cross-section of our community. Just over 18% retired community members, 10% folks who are community members but didn't have, weren't a parent, agriculture owners, and of course, residential property owners as well. So, and we did the, we did ask about staff members, and we sorted out, and then we talked about this when we designed the survey, do you live here or do you not? And so we're able to, to really defend or prevent a, a swing of the survey by someone who's not a community member, that, which I think is reasonable for your, the board to consider when you think about that. So what, what is, what are my observations about this? If you go to the next one there, Caitlin, you know, this is a very similar number of responses to our, our survey last spring. So last spring, if you recall, we did the Morris Leatherman survey, the phone survey, which assigned, based on their, their standard deviation and margin of error, they tell us 400 is the responses that were towards. But then we also put our own survey out, and we got just about 400 responses, interestingly enough. So similar number as a year ago. Also, a very similar number relative to whether they support or not. Last, last spring's question was, do you support either the K6 facility or a remodel type option? And then it was still about 50% either direction there for that. We do have lots of insights we can glean when you start thinking about the rationales. None of them were particularly anything that we haven't talked about as a board. So there wasn't anything that we haven't, like, my gosh, I didn't, we didn't even think about that. There wasn't any of those. But the volume of responses on a particular topic will help us wade our way through this as we think about what people are truly thinking. And again, as I mentioned, multiple perspectives in the community were represented, which I think is a positive thing. So when we think about what comes next, it really is, is for the board to review the survey results. Like I said, there's multiple other responses for rationale that you'll want to read through, as well as multiple comments to consider. Some that were multiple paragraphs, some that were a couple lines, all valid for people's perspectives and what they bring to the table. And all very, I would say, for the most part, there's always going to be a handful of, of responses that you think, you know, that's maybe a little bit more agenda-based than not. But for the most part, I would say very respectful, productive, like valid, and they're all valid perspectives. Our community has very insightful things to say, and I think it's, they're all very well, well-done comments. I appreciate our, our community giving their input in that way. And then over the next couple, couple weeks or months, depending on the board's, board's preference, really the next action is do we do anything with this or not at this point? This is just another piece of information towards the overall process that is something we've been talking about for a while. So do we move forward with a, with the K6 bond? Do we look at something else to make repairs at our buildings? Do we look at a non-bond option? Do we look at some, a non-bond, it's a little bit of a misnomer when I say non-bond option. The capital facility bond is still a bond, but it's not a voter-approved. It's bartering against ourselves. And basically, you take, and that would be something if you wanted to do like a million and a half or 2 million, and then you pay it back over the next 10 years out of your revenue. We just paid that off what lasts, this last year, right, the last one we had for that. And then I just put on there, or manage LTFM plan. What I mean by that is basically do nothing, and we just continue to manage our plan as best we can with the LTFM dollars we have. That's certainly a, a decision that the, the board could make. I put the timeline on here, not because I necessarily have us tied to any one of these, but I want you to be aware of what the timelines look like with the new legislation that was just put in this last summer. If we were to look at a spring election, you can see what those dates are in December, or January, or January and March, what those would look like, next November, what it would look like for dates. So the board has a sense there of what, any decisions that would be time-sensitive to a particular election would look like. What the review and comment means is, what that means is we submit our plan to the state that says, this is what we're thinking of doing. Do you see any issue? Basically, they have a chance to review it and then give us their comments, right? That's what it is. But that's not committing to an election. That just is basically saying, yes, the state looks at your plan. It looks like a reasonable plan. That's why the December 1 precedes the board resolution. The board doesn't actually have to resolve to do an April election in that example until the end of January. But because of the timelines put in place by MDE, they give themselves plenty of time to get back to us, as well as we have to have it published in the newspaper by a certain number of days before any election we have. That's why we have to have that in before that. And so a, a local example of that this last summer was Mankato did a vote to say, submit the review and comment without committing to an election, and then it was a subsequent board meeting that they actually voted to go to the election. That way, they had their ducks in a row, if you will, if they chose to go in that direction. If you do a review and comment, and then you choose not to go for an election, there's no, there's no consequence to that. That's fine. You just have to have everything well thought out to be able to do that. So my next steps in this process is to make the entire spreadsheet available to you, so you'll have some nice reading, bedtime reading for you to consider, to think through that. Have some conversations with, with board members as, as Julie, as our chair, you can take us through what you think steps could be in the next few months, if anything. And then, but also for our community, I will post this on the website probably mid-next week, because I typically, as we've done this in the past, I'll give it to the board tomorrow, give you a handful of days into early next week to look at it if you choose, just so if you get to it, you have a chance to see it before the community does. And then I'll send it out, then I'll put it on the website, so the entire community has a chance to see all the feedback as well. Because I don't ever want anyone's comment not to be honored, and their perspective not to be part of the discussion. So I'll put that out there for everyone to see. So for tonight's, my, my purpose of sharing this with tonight was just to get this out in front of you, share with the community that we have results, and now we have some time to dig into them. It was kind of a trickle in terms of just the communication of it all and how we got it all out there. And so I just wanted to share that we've got, you know, pretty good massive results now, and we can do with it what the board chooses. That's, okay?
Does anyone have, I have thoughts, but does anyone have thoughts that they want to share before, or comments or questions? My own thoughts are, I do think the board needs to choose one of these options formally. And it sounds like we have time. So we have time to review the full survey. We have, you know, we have a board meeting in November, we have a board meeting in, well, any, any of our upcoming board meetings, we could, we could make a decision and, and then choose to do a review and comment or not. But I just think it's time, we've talked about this for so long, we should, we should have a really clear step plan for going forward. So that's, that's my thought. And we don't need to go any further with that tonight. Please read through the, the full survey and stuff, but I would like to formally as a board decide what our plan is going forward, so.
And it won't be new information for anybody at the table here tonight, but I also will link my presentation from earlier this spring as well, to if you want to just refer back to prior information to in one easy link, rather than trying to go back in your files to find something. And I'll put that in the board folder here tomorrow morning.
Will it all be in the October, or this meeting folder, or will it be in a separate?
I think, like, I can do it one of two ways. I can put it in this meeting folder, I can put it just in the board folder as a separate item. What do you think is easiest? Does it matter?
Probably just in the, in the board folder as a separate item, I think. Otherwise, we'd forget maybe what meeting to go looking, to go look for it, so.
Very good. And also email the group, so you have a direct link to that folder as well. So if you haven't been in there recently, you can get to it really quickly.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I think it was a valuable exercise in getting some more feedback from our community. And as evidenced, it's not a, not an easy next step to decide. So we'll work through it.
Yeah. All right, continuing then with our financial enrollment update from Mr. Mullin.
Yes, thank you. Just kind of a couple quick items here. Once again, enrollment, we're continuing to monitor. Right now, it's sitting in a place kind of where we anticipated, maybe a little higher, but, you know, within the range of kind of outcomes where we saw. So that's good. No surprises there. Another thing here, we have open enrollment going right now for our employees with as far as their benefits, and that will run through November 12. I know Jill sent out a couple emails to make sure everyone reads through. One thing with our health insurance to note is we did add another plan this year to give our staff more options. And there is a video recorded by Mark Belts on our website, kind of walking through all that. So if you have questions or, or just want more information, make sure to watch that. Of course, talk to Jill or I if you need anything else on top of that. And then, you know, dental insurance was pretty straightforward this year. There was no changes to the plan. There was no changes to the plan, but once again, that's also part of that enrollment as well as life and some of the other options you'll make. So once again, any questions, make sure to hit up the HR, um, department here and we can get you straightened out. Um, and then lastly, the audit of course is still ongoing, probably a little behind where it was last year, just with the transition and some of those things there, but no surprises so far. So, uh, keep plugging away there and, uh, November 30th will be here before we know it, which is really the, kind of the drop date as far as making changes. Um, and then of course the report will come out the next month and hopefully no surprises there as well. That's all I got unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
So far, nothing with the audit that would lead us to believe we're not going to be on our timeline. Yeah, it's good, but he's doing a great job digging in and hitting into last year's stuff.
Right.
Awesome. All right. Well, if there's no further questions, then we'll continue with our committee and board member reports. Dave, do you want to start us off?
Um, sure. I had, or, or I attended two personnel committee meetings, finance committee, DAAC committee meeting, um, and with the facilities meeting today, um, two of those. No webinars.
You've been busy anyway.
Yeah. One thing I would like to mention is that at our facilities meeting today, we got kind of a, a maintenance report. First time I think we've got one of these, but, um, I think we like it and we hope we get some more in the future, either verbal or written. Just telling us about all the things that are going on with the buildings and our facilities as far as repairs and updates and everything that needs to be taken care of when you have four buildings and a lot of ground. So that was, that was much appreciated. That's all.
All right. Thanks. Charlie?
It's been a, it's been a busy, busy few weeks here with negotiations that are going on, you know, dealing with like three or four different, um, groups of people. So, uh, so we've had several of them, but everything seems to be going well there. Everyone has been really good about it. We did have a policy meeting and we'll get to that. We'll probably talk, we'll be having the policies at the end of the, um, meeting here. Uh, let me see, what else do I have? Oh yeah, insurance and safety committee. Colin gave us some reports there. There, uh, everything seems to be going along well there. There was a little gas smell in the art room, but it was back drafting, it was back drafting through a hot water heater. And so they got that all, they got that all cleared up. So, um, I think that's about, I think that's been about it, but the negotiations are ongoing. So we'll keep, we'll keep plugging along on that one, so.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Baron?
Uh, Dave covered some facilities there, you know, that is, I like that, uh, he commented on that forum. It just keeps you up to date, you know, when it's not your position and everyday role of just in and out and go through the motions. It's nice for us to know what's really happening by not being here and it just gets us up to speed pretty quickly. Policy, Charlie covered that. We'll probably going through some of that here later. Touched on the insurance and safety. Colin pretty much took that over with covering everything, seems to be all right. District accountability, I was at for a short time and not much to bring up really, so.
Thank you. Addie and Colin, can you guys like condense what's been going on at the high school?
It's kind of busy too much.
Yeah.
But, um, we just want to like congratulate all of our sports teams. We had an amazing season, especially girls soccer conference champs and cross country today. So close to state, but we had a couple of individual runners, so that's good. And then good luck to volleyball and football this weekend. We're super excited to see that game. And then tomorrow we have a choir concert, our first of the year at seven with Miss Cryin' Brain. We're really excited to show you guys what we've been working on, so.
And then the, um, the marching man indoor performances are November 9th through 11th at seven as well, right?
Yeah, we had an awesome marching season, so.
Yeah, that was, and then the Veterans Day program is November 10th at nine 30. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
You guys have time for school still, right?
We're trying.
All right. Thank you so much. Grant?
Uh, I think I had about the same committees that were covered. Uh, I was just going to note that the personnel committee, it seems like there's always shifts happening and we need to hear about those. So thank you to all the people who have to constantly deal with shifting personnel changes. In the finance committee, we did cover some of the audit stuff happening and all the work Matt's doing on that. So I had, I don't have anything else to add. And we had the DAC committee, we had one and another one coming up, so it's been busy.
Okay. Thank you. Same. I'm covered. All right. Thank you. Adina?
We had superintendent evaluation policy meeting, superintendent evaluation meeting. And thank you to Eric too, just he went through his goals and measurement and we are on track. He's doing a wonderful job and we're excited to have him here.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Personnel, um, we, we had two meetings and in both of those we talked about our food service director. And I just wanted to say, because we did approve, uh, the new contract. And so our new food, food service director, Amy McQuary, is here on Monday. Um, and then we have a couple of other positions, um, that we talked about, but, um, but yeah, I think that was a big topic for at least for both of those meetings. So that, it's great that that position is filled. Um, and then I did want to say for the superintendent evaluation committee, we reviewed Eric's goals, so we also reviewed, um, the board goals. And one of those, one of our goals is to receive kind of professional development type training. Um, and so our November workshop, we're going to get kind of a deep dive into the levee. So that's kind of, um, addressing one of those goals. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, so. Um, and then PG and D had a meeting. I was not able to attend, but Brooke McGuire is great about updating, um, the minutes really quickly. And so, um, talked about the workshop days before school and it seemed like staff as a whole, um, really enjoyed the guest speaker, which was Will Sweeney. So she's, she came a few years ago and she came back this year and was really well received. Um, they got feedback from their October professional, professional development day and made plans for the upcoming, uh, November 6th workday as well. So I think that's it, but yeah, we've all been busy. Clearly school is back in session, so. All right. Uh, moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback today. Continue.
Um, because we did just hire a new food service director, um, I would like to welcome Mrs. McQuery to that job. And I'd also like to send out a thanks to, um, all the cooks, the aides, the cashiers, the substitutes, the custodians that help with breakfast and meals, cause they, they do a lot for our kids. Uh, it's not something that's taught in a classroom necessarily, but, um, they do a really good job, um, providing nutritious meals and snacks, um, for our kids, our students. So just want to send out a thank you to them.
All right. Thank you.
Well, as you know, I got a couple of grandsons on the football team, so we're following the football team. We had a disappointing loss at Fairmont last, uh, last Wednesday night, but they played well on Monday night and now we have a game on Saturday afternoon. And so, and then the other thing is, I'm talking to my grandsons, I got a bonus granddaughter this year. So she's, uh, her name is Jade Duchaine, Michelle, and she's from France and our daughter has her and I want to just, she's on the, and she's on the cheer team and I just want to, you know, thank all the people for being so welcoming to her. And she's having a great experience this year and the teachers and the staff and the kids. And it's been a great experience having, having a foreign exchange student within our family. So I want to, I want to just say thank you to all the kids and, and all the, all the teachers and other staff that have really welcomed her. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Baron?
Um, I think pretty much attended, uh, yeah, fall jamboree with the youth football. Pretty crazy. Kids running everywhere all day, lot of teams, it was a good time. Played a little, in a little bit of mud out there, but they did, they did fine, so.
All right. Thank you. Addie and Colin?
No, no, no.
I know, I've had that opportunity to work with, um, some of the counselors in the school on some projects and I just want to share my appreciation for them because they are awesome.
Um, I would like to shout out Ms. Cryin' Brain for our choir concert tomorrow. We're all really excited to show what we've been working on the past couple of weeks, so.
Yes. Jack has been talking about it every day because choir concert is on Friday. He's very excited, so I'm excited to see it. All right. Thank you. Uh, Grant?
Uh, I had two things. Uh, as, as you had said, thank you to all the people who did do the survey, those, the information that people provide, uh, is important and it does help us. It helps us get a better insight. So thank you to people who took the time to do the survey. Also, uh, I'd like to congratulate Brendan Nelson on getting the Golden Apple Award. There was a, a nice KYC article, or a little video clip about it and that's well deserved recognition for what she does.
Keep going. I had football and volleyball both on my list. They're playing Lake Crystal tonight. That should be a tough game, but they've been having a pretty decent season. And then Nikki Benson with the community schedule, I was looking at gym space and trying to reserve some gym space, um, over the winter and she manages quite a crazy schedule, so hats off to her for managing all of that. Yes. Well, it's another example of how busy our facilities are all the time. So yeah, and having people that manage that is important.
Uh, well, it's a Blue Jay Blast season. It's coming up. I would like to say thank you for all the volunteers who already are in and trying to prepare everything and figure it out to, that we have successful evening in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Um, and I had, I was going to shout out to Brendan Nelson also, but thank you for stealing that grant. But, um, I also wanted to, um, kind of go outside the school district a little bit, but, um, I've been listening to the new podcast in town, which is Small Town Big Stories. Um, Ann Fitch, uh, who's with the chamber, has been hosting it and I really enjoyed listening to her guests, um, learning more about our people and businesses that are here in town. And it's a really great way to highlight Wasika. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to check it out, I really recommend it. It's, um, it's pretty fun. They do a great job, so. All right. I think that's everything. Yeah. Action items, I'm just kidding, we're not done. All right. Can I get a motion then for item A under action items?
I'll make, go ahead.
A motion to approve acceptance of, uh, received gifts and donations.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Uh, thank you to, uh, both donors for those really important gifts, so. All right. If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. This is a roll call. Caitlin, please read the roll.
Grant Schuffert?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Charlie Prey?
Yes.
Baron Kruger?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. That motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
Make the motion to approve 2023 fall lane change.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Um, item C is a resolution, so anyone that wants to make this motion, um, I have the resolution. You can. Do you want to make the motion?
A resolution proposing to immediately discharge a continuing contract teacher identified as teacher A, be resolved by the school board of independent district number 829, number one. Teacher A is proposed to be immediately discharged pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A, uh, dot 40 comma subdivision 13. Uh, item two, written notice be sent to the teacher regarding the proposed immediate discharge as provided by law and that said notice shall be in the form set forth in exhibit A attached here two. Uh, number three, each and all, excuse me, each and all of the grounds set forth in said notice are within the grounds for the immediate discharge of a continuing contract teacher. Number four, exhibit A to this resolution contains private, um, I think that should be data. Uh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Data on individuals pursuant to the Minnesota government data practices act, Minnesota statutes, chapter 13, and therefore the superintendent is specifically directed to maintain the private data classification of the exhibit in accordance with applicable state law. Number five, the written notice attached here to, as exhibit A shall be signed by the clerk of the school board and served upon teacher as determined by the administration of independent school district number 829. And item number six, given the circumstances of teacher A's proposed discharge, the teacher shall not be paid pending the conclusion of a hearing if requested and a final determination on the proposed discharge.
All right. We have a motion for this resolution. Could I get a second?
Second.
First and a second. And then, um, any discussion or did you want to make a comment?
I think, I think the comment to make for the board and for the community is just, this is, this is result, uh, regarding a teacher that did not honor their contract and attempted to leave the district without being released from the district. So that's the purpose of this, the district following through with the, the contract termination.
Yep. And just for the public to be aware that this, the board here is all aware of the situation. We're just following procedure and, um, yeah. Any other questions or comment? Okay. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, oh, nevermind, it's a roll call. So Caitlin, call the roll.
Grant Schuffert?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Charlie Prey?
Yes.
Baron Kruger?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. Uh, this motion carries unanimous. Uh, continuing item D, we are acknowledging our annual assurance of compliance with state and federal law. And if you just want to speak really quickly.
Yeah, so each year we're required to, um, submit our assurance to the department of education that we're in compliance with federal and state laws, um, such as for example, title, title nine, the civil rights act, um, Minnesota human rights act, our Minnesota statutes on prohibiting bullying and all those sort of things. So each year we have to submit that our updated policies, if they've not been reviewed recently, which ours have, so that's fine, as well as just acknowledge that we're in compliance with all of our laws. So we are, as I'm sure you would expect, that's a positive thing, but, um, I think it's also good just to make the board aware of it. And as those of you who have been on the board a while, um, you probably remember a time when you had to vote on this and that's changed over the last several years, but as a superintendent, I feel like it's still important to bring this to your acknowledgement each year. So we acknowledge both publicly and with the board that yes, we follow all our state and federal laws. It's good.
Any other questions or comments on that issue? All right. Uh, moving on then. Uh, can I get a motion for item E?
I make the motion to approve revised policies 601, 602, 603, 604, 613.
I'll second that. First and a second. Any discussion?
I would just add that the policy committee, I really appreciate their work at going through these policies in detail and looking at what some of the recommendations may have been combined with what works for us here in Wasika.[1703.26] combined with what works for us here in Waseka. And you know, we, we were able to come to a, to a conclusion here that we, we really appreciate the work we've done so far. I want to honor the work we've done so far. And we are, don't need to make any significant changes to these policies. So I appreciate the work of the committee. Spent some good time digging into these. So I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
I'll motion to, to approve revised policies.
Second.
First and a second. These are the final reading, a second and final reading of revised policies, number four, 18 and 506. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then item G, we are acknowledging the first reading of revised policy, number five, 32. This is the first of two readings required for revising our policies. So, and when you click on that, just scroll down, you'll see the red, the red lined item. So.
Yeah. The ad is just getting with, up to speed with the reporting requirements, with any restrictive procedures we have to have this. It actually then matches our other policy when it comes to restrictive procedures.
All right. That brings us to the end of our action items. So upcoming items and reminders, November 2nd is our school board work session. That is in next week already. So we do not have, we don't have a break next week. Make everyone please show up. We still need a quorum. And then, and that should be a really good session. We're going to talk about our, our proposed levy. We'll talk about the levy process. Yeah, lots of good stuff with that one. So November 6th is professional workday. So Colin and Addie don't go to school that day. So.
Don't tell it twice.
Take a break. And then November 16th is our regular school board meeting. Any other upcoming items? Lots of, lots of sporting events to support and other things coming up. And awesome. All right. If that is everything, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.